I will now call the September 5th, 2018 formal meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio. Councilwoman Guevara. Councilwoman Mendoza.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor.
Please.
Councilwoman Stark. Vice Mayor Waring. Mayor Williams.
Here. Thank you. Our interpreter today, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Anna Arvayio, interpreter. Hay asistencia de interpretaciones en español si la necesitan. Por favor, acudir a la parte de atrás de la sala para recibir sus audífonos. Gracias.
Thank you. Next, citizens' comments. Are these the cards? Each speaker will have three minutes, and if you notice our new setup, we have a clock right there.
Good afternoon again, Mayor Williams and City Council Diane Barker. I'm in District 7. And while I was sitting here a little early, I got to encounter your sustainability information. You were talking about some plans, which I very much support, where it's 40 percent that we would have more persons that would ride chair, would bicycle, walk, and particularly in high-density areas downtown Phoenix. I think that once persons started doing that, they would find benefits in that. That's something Valley Metro is looking at. They say, hey, up in Utah, they're looking at values of transit rather than picking a mode, whether it's bus, light rail, or whatever. So now, after coming out AmeriCope Association of Governments, our city manager was there, and hopefully he is supporting actions what would reduce congestion and add to decreasing pollution. But I am at the bus stop, and that's a busy one. At First Avenue, right by the bus station. And you know, my rear end's getting burnt. Really, those are metal chairs, you know. I couldn't... So I decide, you know something? I gotta go and tell transit. So I'm only met with the... Oh, you know, we don't do that. There's somebody else that's... So I said, hey, anybody that's operating or maintaining for the public a transit system needs to have a conscience. You need to have seats that are covered. So my suggestion would be, I see you've got a pilot program for some misters. You know, I just said to ex-Mayor Stanton, I says, you know, you could take a screen with good bolding, a nice thick screen, and apply it to different bus stops around the valley. Because that would make it so that you didn't have the burning sun come right into the shelter. There's no shelter here. Why don't you look at a screen that is can be applied to those chairs that would come up and curve? Or something that would be innovative. The trees that are there aren't getting enough water to make the shade. And so let's make that, and let's, at the light rail stations, make it so people can get water and their hand doesn't get burnt because the fountain isn't covered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and it's an honor for me to be allowed to speak here. Thank you to all my fellow veterans, social activists, police officers, everybody who nonviolently stands to keep our society and our country together. I'm just here to say something. I and Councilman Noakowski have disagreed in the past, but he has always been courteous and honorable. He's got one of the kindest hearts I've ever met of any of the individuals who have had the honor to serve on this council, and I strongly stand behind him. Let the people decide in a regular election whether he stays or not. All I know is I've always been treated with courtesy and honor by this good gentleman. We all make mistakes, and I ask the people of Phoenix to stand behind him. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards? No. Okay, that's all of the citizen comments. Would you read the 24-hour paragraph, please?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G-6491 through 6502, S-44957 through 44977, and 44979 through 44983, and resolutions 21671 and 21672.
Thank you. We are now to meeting minutes. Councilman DeCecio, did you have an opportunity to review the June 6th meeting?
I move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries unanimously. Councilman Noakowski, did you have an opportunity for June 11th?
Yes, Mayor, and I'd like to approve it. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries unanimously. Vice Mayor Waring, June 19th.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries unanimously. Councilwoman Stark, June 20th.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries unanimously. Boards and Commissions, Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve City Council Boards and Commission nominations.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries. Do we have people here to be sworn in? Okay. Do you have the card? What's his card? It's a card.
Aye.
State your name.
Boban Ray.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true...
Faith and...
Faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of...
Discharge the duties of the office of Paradise Valley Village Commission.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You like the word? We are now to liquor license.
Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve items 6 through 9, noting that the applicant for item 10 has requested a continuance to the October 3rd, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pause. Motion carries unanimously. Ordinances, resolutions, new business planning and zoning.
Mayor, motion to approve items 11 to 64, except the following: 15, 30, 31, 37, 39, 54, 55, 56, 62, and 63. Item 64 is being requested to be continued to September 19th. Items 17 and 37 have been withdrawn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll... Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
No.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. I think that's eight, zero?
Seven, one.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Seven to one. Okay, that brings us to item...
15. I'm voting against it.
Oh, do I?
Move approval. Second.
Any comments from anyone? Hearing none. Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes. I believe, item 30?
Sixty-two.
Oh, sixty...
Sixty-two.
Oh, sixty-two. I forgot. Sixty-two.
I'm gonna move to approve item 30.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Hold on, I think we're out of order, aren't we? We're supposed to do 30 next. Why 62?
No, it was six to two on the vote.
This is 30.
Oh, six to... Okay, yes. She misheard it, too. Okay. We're on item 30. Okay, we are on 30?
Thirty, three oh.
And you pulled it. Okay, yeah, then the answer, the vote's no. I just, I heard 62.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Item 31.
Move item 31. Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Guevara. Mendoza. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes. Item 37 was withdrawn. It brings us to item 39.
I'm sorry? Yes, move item 39. Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Guevara. Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes. Item 37 was withdrawn. It brings us to item 39.
I'm sorry? Yes, move item 39. Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes. Sixty-two. Brings us to item 54.
Move to approve item 54.
Second.
A card on that. Leslie Sorenson, would you like to come speak on this item? That's up to two minutes.
Madam Mayor, I thought the item was continued. Should I come back until the next meeting?
I'm sorry.
I think the item was continued a moment ago. Would you like me to come back at a future meeting?
54 wasn't continued.
Am I wrong? Okay, I'm sorry then. Thank you very much, Leslie Sorenson, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Here on behalf of myself, I reside at 37 East Woodward Drive, and our property is subject to a potential overlay today if you approve it for the historic boundaries. We would love to be able to join the Ashland Historic District, and it's gone through the process unanimously. I think this would be really good for our neighborhood, and we are really looking forward to your support. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Thank you. Do we have a... We do have a motion?
Okay.
And a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara. Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Item 55.
Move to approve item 55.
Second.
Okay, we have cards on item 55. Donna Homcher.
Donna? Thank you. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I'm here to speak to you about 55 is the Little Canyon Trail and GCU, is I'm right on that?
Mm-hmm.
I'm concerned about the trail and the integrity of it. There's going to be a large, 10-foot wide...
31st Avenue.
31st Avenue?
Yes, 31st Avenue and Camelback. Are we looking at 31st Avenue and Glendale? Because I'm speaking on both.
Okay.
Okay, 31st Avenue and Glendale is going to be a three-story tall condos, which is a tragedy to a neighborhood that is all one level. It's very frightening. What I've handed out are photos of what it may look like in five to 10 years when the families multiply and you have multiple cars and no place to put them, just to begin with the problems. There is concern about the traffic coming out onto 31st, 31st Avenue, and Glendale has a light, and there are quite a few accidents there frequently, and you add more traffic coming out right at the corner, could be a major problem. Unfortunately, I did not get to attend the meetings that were held in the neighborhood because of my health, and I heard the leadership of our neighborhood did meet with the builder, approaching with some ideas for changes, but they were rejected. And that's about all I have to say on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm hoping that this three-story apartment complex on 31st Avenue and Glendale will be turned down. Doesn't look like it. At the planning meeting that was held here, there was a little 89, 88-year-old lady that got up and spoke. She waited probably six hours to speak. She went home in a rainstorm, had to wait for a ride. I didn't see her today, but I wish she was here to say her piece. She was concerned about the height of this building because she couldn't see the cross looking across Glendale Avenue at the Love Baptist Church. And we don't need three-story buildings in this neighborhood, and I hope that you'll hold it down to a two-story building. I wish that little lady that was spoken, spoke at the last meeting was here to say her piece. She could say so much more than I can, but thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. We have one more card that doesn't want to speak. Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I spoke with the neighborhood leader of the Ocatillo Glen Neighborhood Association, whose project this is in her neighborhood, and she is supportive. And I also talked to another neighborhood organization next to this property, and they are in support. So I will be, I plan on supporting this project today.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Move item... Move... Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion for item 56. Second.
Are you making the motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
You said you approved.
Oh, yes, I'd like to move to approve. Thank you.
Okay. Everyone, this is her first meeting, so be kind. Donna Homcher, we have some cards. We'd like to see you just go up and down.
I can't be able to walk. And this one is on Glendale, I mean Grand Canyon University's... Okay, thank you. I support some, many of the things that GCU's been doing. There have been times the communications from between the neighborhoods could have, be a little better, and we've been working on it, and I hope they have been. I'm concerned about the Little Canyon Trail, the fact that it is American Disabilities Act compliant. It was put there with over $1 million of art grant money. It's a treasure, a point of pride of the neighborhood, and any changes to it could be disastrous. The, I walked it, and I couldn't walk very far, but I got it one end, and what I saw, there's a lot of paint on the design, on the semen on the bottom, and it's SRP and other things, and I'm hoping that's not going to be dug up for any reason. And this walk that they're putting in, coming from the trail to the existing walk, it was going to be 10 feet wide, and my understanding, it originally was going to be narrow in another place, but they did expand it to 10 feet wide all the way down. I hope they're going to be illuminated paint on it. That trail is open 24/7. I've asked the questions about how will it be marked, and no one's been able to answer that. I'm unsure on the drawings I've seen, whereas it's connecting with the existing sidewalk to the east. There's a gate there. Will it be on the north side of that little gate? Will it be on the south side of the gate? I hope safety is the essence, because you have people in wheelchairs, people on bikes, you have moms with strollers that are using that trail at all hours of the day and evening. That's about all I...
Ellen, do you have any answers for, quickly?
Sure. Mayor, members of council, I do have a PowerPoint that I think can show the aerial and what's happening, and that will help provide some answers relative to her questions. In terms of the ADA question, the trail does have existing ADA spaces that are on Colter, which is a street that is just to the north of the subject site, that someone could park and then access the trail. In addition, they have approval of the church to use their ADA parking spaces that fronts right on Camelback Road. In addition to the proposed parking structure that's the subject of the zoning case, does also have ADA spaces in there that GCU has said they would instruct their parking staff to allow people who want to use the trail to come in and park in those accessible parking spaces. And so this request before you is to go from a self-storage use, which is C2 special permit, to P2 for structured parking. This just shows the surrounding area. If you zoom in here, the church that I referenced is right here, and their ADA spaces are in here that can be used to then access the existing Little Canyon Trail that goes up here to the north. They are proposing as part of their development a 10-foot-wide continuation of the trail that will follow the edge of the new parking structure, the edge of the property, and connect up to where it exists today, which is an improvement over what's there today. Currently, the trail dead-ends into a cul-de-sac, which is asphalt, and there really isn't any sidewalk area delineated to get down to Camelback Road. So they are proposing that 10-foot-wide sidewalk to get down there to make that connection all the way through Little Canyon Trail.
Thank you.
May I make a comment about the disabled handicap that is within the parameters of the student parking? In the photographs that I gave you, you'll see there's a slab with the two parking spaces on it, and then there is like about a four-foot wide slab going parallel to the fence to get you to the gate to get out. There's a section of it missing. If you are on a walker, maybe even a cane, which I've experienced both, you could not maneuver that, let alone a wheelchair. I hope, that parking lot, I understand, is temporary, and someday there's going to be a building there. So what happens then? The last page of the photos I gave you was an idea that I would like to talk to Mr. Earl about, where they could put a permanent parking space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Kripal.
Okay, you see where the yellow line is? That's where the new zoning thing's supposed to be. Okay? And what I was looking through, because we do have the trail goes right along the west side of that, the Little Canyon Trail, that we have tried to preserve at all cost. What they've decided to do is they were going to put some kind of a special thing out there across the pavement to make it so that it's easier for people to go across. Why cannot they instead put the opening to this structure on the east side? They can always put, like we have the parking garage we have over here, you go in one side, and then you come down the elevators on the other side, so you can access all these buildings rather quickly. This is, most of this thing here is supposed to be for when they're having special things happening. And if that's the way it should be, then why can't they put it on the other side? Because they already have a parking garage next to the yellow, and it would be easier for the policing of it, because they could have people coming in, making left-hand turns off of Camelback into the yellow structure while they're making right-hand turns into the other. And that's what I was thinking that would, it would solve all our problems, because then we would not have to worry about our safety, because our safety's going to be on the far side. If they wanted to, in the upper left-hand corner, they could put elevators going down that puts it closer to whatever event they're doing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Taylor Earl, would you come down, and perhaps you could answer that question?
Good evening or afternoon, mayors, members of council. My name is Taylor Earl. For your record, I'm at 3101 North Central Avenue. I actually have some slides that I think will really be responsive to that. I don't know if there's a clicker that I can use. I can advance them. So let me skip ahead here. Okay. So this slide right here shows exactly what we're proposing. So the dark purple is the only thing that's a subject of today's application. The buildings to the northeast, those are shown of why we're needing the garage in the first place. We have student housing that is going to be either it's online, or it's coming online soon, or it's in the process of being planned. All of those student houses are, have already been approved within the PU, the PUD that we have. So those are already approved, ready to go. But we can't get one ski out too far in front of the other, so that's why we're bringing on parking, to make sure that those student residents have a place to park. But what this slide shows is how the circulation for this garage would occur. If you look down, and I'll try to laser point it here on the big screen, this is the primary access point, right here. If you look at all of GCU's garages, all of the primary access points have guard booths. It's the only way to get into a GCU garage, is to go past the guard booth. This is the only place that a guard booth is being proposed, which means it's the only primary access point. These other spots here would be gated nearly all of the time. And these other red lines show how, after an event, we might empty the garage, get people out in a safe and orderly manner. And I'll zoom in a little bit and show exactly what that would look like. Again, this is just showing the other guard booths that we have for all of the primary access points. Okay.[1668.11] Okay. So this is 31st Avenue, and this right here is the Little Canyon Trail. This is the existing condition of 31st Avenue today. This is the self-storage structure here. Users of the trail would come off of the trail and then they would have no place to go except for either cross over 31st Avenue to this side, or they would have to historically move around the trucks that were parked here and make their way past this driveway onto this sidewalk. So this was not a safe condition. So what we're proposing to do is what you see here overlaid on top. So this would be the parking garage. This pathway right here is an emergency lane and would only, under stipulation, could only ever be ungated, here's the gate, it could only ever have the gate open if there were GCU personnel present, meaning that we would use it, for example, after an event. But it is not to be an access point. It's not going to have cars flowing through it on a regular basis, only if a GCU personnel is present, and that was built into the stipulations. We also agreed to do a 10-foot-wide path that would now, instead of having people to walk, you know, into this area, they would now have a protected pedestrian pathway over this area and all the way down to connect to Camelback. So it is a much, much safer experience than it was and it is today. And I'll show you kind of what that looks like. So again, here, this is to be gated and it remains gated, and then here is the connection that comes across. This is more or less what that would look like if you consider that it would just come straight across 10 feet wide. And this is what it would look like. It's a raised pedestrian table and it makes sure that when someone's coming off the sidewalk, they have a nice at surf, you know, at grade, and coming off this curb, it would be at that same grade and would come all the way across. We think the reflective paint is a great idea and we'll be incorporating that to make sure that at night, if the headlights are on it, that you would again be able to see it, it would reflect, and it would make sure that the drivers, any drivers who might be crossing with a GCU security personnel present or a personnel present, they would know that the pedestrian is king and that the pedestrians would have, would have that ride away.
Pastor, did you have a question?
I do. Could you go back? I think it's right there. So at the, let's see, the south side right there, is that Camelback?
This down here is Camelback, yes.
Okay. And so where the dark, the lines right there, the...
This right here?
Right.
Okay. Yep.
You're saying that that area will be a gated
So...
drive-through or access point?
Correct. So this, just to clarify, this dash line represents the property line. This 31st Avenue has actually been abandoned, and at the time, it was owned by the church on this side and by the self-storage on this side, and there were cross-access easements which remain today. This line here shows you this pathway from the left side here to the right side here, that is that lane that would wrap around the garage, up and around the garage. That is for emergency access, as essentially a fire lane. And it would remain gated, meaning that nobody could use it, and there's no guard booth there, so it wouldn't be a primary access point that we would be using. But the reason it's beneficial is that if we, and I should note, 75% of this garage, we anticipate, is going to be used for student residence. Just that extra 25%, if we have an event, that it might be effective to use it for that purpose. If we were then to want to empty cars out, this is a signal, which makes it a nice, safe movement for folks coming out of that parking garage. So it's a nice opportunity, but again, under stipulation, it couldn't be used unless a GCU, somebody was there at present at the site. Only then could this gate be opened, and it would be only one way. So would there only be, in that case, it would only be people exiting. It's not, it's not wide enough for two-way.
So when you say there's a stipulation, Alan, you know how we put stipulations and then I find out later something else is different and the stipulation doesn't, we can't really use it? My conver, my question is, in this stipulation, this is a valid stipulation that we, if somebody says this is not what's happening, can come back to the city and make a complaint and then we can look into it? Or...
Mayor, Councilwoman, Pastor, yes. The stipulation is stipulation number three, and it reads, "The fire access lane on the west side of the parking garage adjacent to 31st Avenue shall not be utilized as a primary access point and shall be gated at all times unless in use by emergency personnel or in use with Grand Canyon University security personnel present," all of the times when they're dispersing from a larger event and they have security there that are monitoring that access point.
Okay.
So I believe that stipulation is, is clear and enforceable should the city need to do that in the future.
So my question to that is, the stipulation, it's the last line where it says GCU security...
Personnel present.
Personnel present. So this is what I'm thinking, or scenario in my head, because I go to events at times for graduations during the GCU moments in all city and high school graduations there that they host. And what happens on Camelback is there's large events happening and there's gridlock all on Camelback, getting into the garages and also getting out of the garages. So one of my questions is, when it's GCU personnel, that doesn't mean there has to be an emergency, that means that there's a GCU personnel standing there that the gates are open and that they could move a flow of cars through that area. Am I on the right track or am I correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman, Pastor, I believe their intent is to use that parking structure predominantly for residents, as Mr. Earl stated, but when they do have events like a basketball game or something like that, they would use excess parking for those bigger events as part of traffic flow, which has gotten to be a good science compared to what it used to be relative to dispersing from big events. You try and direct traffic in certain areas, and so because there's two parking structures that are entering in that same area, they can disperse from the east, from the west side on 31st in the event of one of those games or large events to help spread that traffic flow out, and that's what they would end up doing.
Okay. My question to you, Mr. Earl, is, there was a statement made by one of the constituents was, is there another way to make movement or flow out that traffic other than, I believe it was Camelback?
So that's why I pulled this slide back up. If you see, the way that we have designed it in correlation with the existing circulation pattern, what it means is that we would have the ability to send cars out this way, this way, this way, this way, and this way. So there would be five different ways that we can disperse, what would only end up generally being about 25% of that garage at maximum. And there's, you know, we're not, and I'm just saying worst-case scenario. So we have lots of different ways. We can send them up to Coulter, we can send them over to 29th, we can send them to Camelback here, we can send them to the light. And so the whole idea, if you've ever been to an event, is that we try to, we try to control it, we try to make it, and we're putting in more garages so that we are, again, we are spreading out the amount of impact. So as there were growing pains in the beginning, but we've put in more structure, and that's part of the reason that this, this case is important, so that we have the ability to not just put people right next to the arena, not just put people on the 35th, but we can put some people here now in this garage and we can disperse them in all the different ways possible. The reason that the 35th, or the 31st Avenue is important is because it does have that controlled signal. And generally, if you've seen, we will have police present there, they can control the signal, they can make it longer so that allows more cars to flow out. And so that's, it's important to be able to have that option, to have a nice, safe movement that people have, that it's controlled with a, with a traffic signal. And so that's the reason that we wanted to preserve it. And I may just speak to the stipulation, that wording is actually done because we wanted to avoid of any type of vagueness with saying only to be used in emergencies or events. And the concern was that, that that would be not understood, what's an event, what's not an event? And so that's why we said, okay, it just has to be gated all times unless you have a security personnel present. And we thought that was an easier to enforce, very objectionable, very easy for someone to see, it's open, is there somebody present, not come and talk to us, is this an event or not an event? So we thought that was a lot, much easier way and much easier to enforce.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Hearing, and we do have one more card. Gail Palmer?
I wished I had four or five days up here to tell you some of the things we've been through in the neighborhood. I would like to have these pictures back on that we've been looking at the last few minutes, if it's at all possible, please. There's two lanes there on the left-hand side that's coming out, like Mr. Earl said, at the light. There's going to be two right there in the middle, there's two more, and I think that distance is less than probably 250 feet, maybe, maybe it's 300 feet. Now, how do you turn six lanes of traffic out into one lane of traffic unless you, there's three lanes going west on Camelback? But please, don't turn it up into the neighborhood. I own this piece of property right to the north of that, and GCU is pretty sure they do, do this every year. They do an at-risk thing. They've already got a sidewalk poured from those dorms on the west side, those dorms on the east side, they have not got permits for that. The two, if I had a pointer, I'd point it out, but those two dorms are going to be scheduled for next year, I understand, if there's enough room for sewage and all of the others. But these two dorms on the left-hand side, next to that void to the northeast of that parking garage is, they're, they're going to have them walk across, they've got a 10-foot sidewalk across the north of that property line already. They have not got the bridge across the ditch yet to get onto the trail. And yes, I hope to see that done, but do we need all of that traffic going up and down the trail? They seem to think, they've been trying for years to get the trail taken away from the neighborhood. Please, city, do not let that be taken away from our neighborhood. The next thing, there's a bridge that's probably going to be put in, I presume, unless something happens, that it doesn't. And yes, it'll alleviate the traffic on Coulter from these dorms. I would like to go back a little bit in history, and I know that it's not the thing to do right in front of my property. In 15, GCU come after an abandonment of this Coulter Street and 30th Drive. The city went after that, or GCU went after that, and I believe about four months ago, maybe in October, whatever. Mr. Allen Stevenson said that all of the stipulations have been completed, that it was not true. There's a section of that walk that's on the north side of Coulter that still has not been completed. It's supposed to be an eight-foot sidewalk, seven, eight-foot sidewalk, was a four-foot all the way over to the trail. It still has not been done, but he sat in that chair at that meeting and said it was all completed. That was a lie.
Thank you. I need you to wrap up.
Okay. The, I thank you for listening to me. They, they, thank you.
Welcome. I believe we have a motion and a second. Roll call. Any comment, discussion?
I have...
Roll call. Oh, sorry.
I have one more question.
Please.
Regarding the ADA requirement that was brought up, can you speak on that, Alan, or...
Sure. Mayor, Councilwoman, Pastor, in this particular case, you know, anytime applicant builds a parking structure, they're required to have a percentage of it be ADA accessible parking spaces. That's what they have and will be built in to meet those requirements. What GCU is saying is they will allow for someone to drive up and say, I want to park here and use one of the ADA accessible spaces in the garage if they wish to, to park there, and GCU would allow them to park there and walk the trail. In addition, they have agreement with the church, which is even closer, to provide ADA accessible parking there for a resident, for anyone who wants to come and walk the trail. And so it is, you know, something that they have tried to provide some additional parking down in this area for persons with disabilities who want to come, park there, and then use the trail.
I think what I heard, and I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, when I talk, I'm talking about ADA requirements regarding parking, but I'm also talking about ADA requirements from where they're parked, where that gap is, so that if they have a cane or a, not a scooter, but a mobile wheelchair, that they're able to go from, say, the church, that is where they're parking for ADA, to cross over. I think it was in one of those, I just want to be able to answer the question that was asked.
So Mayor, Councilwoman, Pastor, they are proposing kind of the raised ramp to make that a clear connection going across there, and they will meet all those requirements as it relates to the ADA spaces in the parking structure. The ADA spaces that are, the church, aren't ones that they legally control. The church property is not subject to the zoning case, that's before council. They have simply reached an agreement to say that if someone wants to park even closer, the church has said, yes, they will not cite anyone for parking on their property and then using the church, but there would be no improvements to the ADA spaces on the church as it relates to getting over to the trail.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Eight-zero. Thank you. Bring us to 62?
Move to approve item 62.
Second.
Okay, we do have cards. I believe they are all in favor of this item. Did you still wish to speak? Motion is to approve. No? Okay. Any comments, discussion? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Guevara.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Eight-zero. I believe that brings us to item 63. Do we need a staff report first?
Certainly, yes. I'm happy to have a PowerPoint here for this one, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor, members of council, this is a request to rezona property from S1 to R16 for a 5.02 acre parcel located at the northeast corner of 41st Street and Southern Avenue. You can see the subject site is a long, narrow parcel here that is bordered by two residential developments on either side here. It's about five, a little over five acres is the overall site. The South Mountain Village Planning Committee did recommend approval pursuant to this request by a vote of 11 to 6, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval by a 5 to 0 vote. You can see the surrounding zoning pattern is R18 and R2. They are fit right in with that, with their proposal for the R16 zoning category would be the one right in between those two parcels in terms of your zoning category. Here's their proposed site plan. They have an access point off of Southern Avenue. They're required by the subdivision ordinance to connect into existing stubbed-out streets, in this case, to the west of them, so these two streets are shown to go through as part of their proposed site plan. They have a single row of lots and open space here for about 24 lots is their overall development plan. Here are some typical elevations that they have. With that, staff is happy to answer any questions regarding this proposed application.
Are there any questions at this time? I think we have to have a public hearing. We now have a public hearing. We do have cards. We have, I am going to really mess this name up, Larry Cusackrea?
Cusackrea.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Cusackrea. I live at 3502 East Vineyard Road in Phoenix. I've been a long-term advocate in South Mountain. I've been up here a few times, but in the past, since 1971, I've been here a great deal with the development of South Phoenix. In this particular issue, the reason that I'm here is to talk to the city about what I consider to be a bad design. A good idea to develop it, we really want to get this developed, okay? Because it's an orphaned piece of property. It was leftover instead of normal development. We've got a long, deep piece of property that only going to hold 24 houses. But how that impacts the area, the next to it, is what is an issue. The, the group that's directly to the west of this, okay, you all have packets, you'll see it, is that they have been there for almost 40 years as development. I only preceded them by about three, being down in South Phoenix as a resident there. The issue here really is that this particular project has been designed and forced into its direction and design by only one thing, the city of Phoenix's ordinances. The community itself does not want to have the streets go through. For 39 years, they haven't had the streets go through, and everything's worked fine. They have two exits and two exits, and entrances and exits. And now, all of a sudden, the city, because of its strictness of saying you have to extend streets that have been sitting there after 39 years of non-use, it's going to give that 29 little, that little strip of 24 houses is now going to have three exits and entrances. That makes no common sense to me whatsoever, just on that standpoint. But the real reality of it is, is that that project should have been designed in a slightly different way. It should have been flipped over, so the roadway should be on the east side, and that would have allowed, I mean, pardon me, on the west side, so that the roadway, the houses could have been positioned on the east side of the property. Why does that make sense? Because they are the same size of lots and the same types of houses and two-story. And what the community on the west side doesn't want is two-story buildings looking into their houses. Now, they've worked with the developer, and the developer's willing to build this thing the way they're talking about it.
Thank you.
what you're doing that may negatively affect our community. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Teresa Contreras.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Teresa Contreras, and I live at 4105 East Huntington Drive in Phoenix. I have lived there for 28 years. I know all four neighbors on my street, and I recognize every car associated with each house. If the street is opened up, there will be strange cars driving up and down the street all hours of the day and night, which will destroy my sense of security that I've had all these years. The folks at Rose Law Group have stated that the city is the one mandating that Sunland Avenue and Huntington Drive be opened up and cited City Codes 32-26 and 32-27 as the reasons. After review of the codes, it appears that 32-26 says the department may designate the continuation or discontinuation of such streets. It sure seems that there is some wiggle room here on this one. It also goes on to state that certain proposed streets, as designated by the department, shall be extended to the tract boundary to provide future connection with adjoining unplatted lands. When our community was formed, back in 1979, almost 40 years ago, there was no intention of these streets ever being opened up, and we see no reason that they have to be opened up now. We believe there is also some discretion that can be applied here by the city. 32-27 states dead-end streets will not be approved except in locations designated by the department. Well, we are asking that the new community have this designation, which has been allowed in similar nearby communities in our packets on page 15, 16, and 17 that we just showed you. At least 10 nearby communities, they've allowed that to go on, so it seems, the city seems to have designated at those locations, so why can't a single street with a cul-de-sac be okay here?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, we hope you'll listen to all of our folks that are here today. We've got a lot of people signed up on that petition, and we hope that you'll help us out on this.
Thank you. Mila Mandell. She will be followed by Ann Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Mila Mandell. I live at 4102 East Huntington Drive. I am one of the original families in the neighborhood. I am a substitute teacher, and one of the classes I substitute for is urban planning. The goal of infilling is to add to the community, not take away from the community. Noel Gardens is asking for a stipulation of only two things, not unreasonable. Number one, do not open Sunland, and do not open Huntington Drive, and flip the new houses from west side to east side. We have signatures from a petition, which you have a copy of. Ninety percent of the neighborhood families request the stipulations. Why open Huntington Drive? It's three houses from Southern Avenue. This is unreasonable and unnecessary. The lot is empty right now. There's no utilities, no attached builder, so the houses that they're showing you are just imaginary houses, just an idea. It's a blank slate. Let's add to the community and not take away from a 40-year-old, established community.
Thank you. Ann Smith?
She'd have to leave. Can I take her two minutes?
No, Diana Jones. Good try, though.
Good try.
Hi, my name is Diana Jones. I live at 5651 South 41st Street. I'm an analytical kind of person. I did a lot of that research and got all of those analytics and the data regarding crime rates and how it's going to affect our neighborhood negatively. But today, I want to talk to you more about privacy and the quality of life in our neighborhood. I wanted you first to consider my story. I was the first person to move into our neighborhood when it was built in 1979. I raised four children, two grandchildren. For almost 40 years, I've never had to question my privacy or safety. My house is located exactly in the middle of the street with the backyard next to the lot that they're proposing to build in. I can't prove to you through analytics or data what I'm feeling, so instead, I'm going to ask you, please, if you could just take a minute, close your eyes, and imagine just for a second that you're in your own backyard, enjoying your family, laughing and carrying on with your children and/or your grandchildren. Your family is together, enjoying family time. Then you look up. You see not one, but two houses with people looking into your backyard. How does it make you feel? Anxious, uncomfortable, threatened, vulnerable, like you can't spend time in your own backyard the way you used to? Now imagine you're one of my neighbors with a pool in their backyard. Maybe your wife, or your daughter, or your granddaughter wants to lay around the pool relaxing without a worry in the world. Now, if you had your eyes closed, if you could look up at me right now and imagine that I'm standing just a story above you, the distance that I'm at from you right now, or probably from you from Felicita, maybe, is about the same distance that these houses will be to my backyard. You can see the emotions on my face. I can see the emotions on your face. I can see your eyes. I can see your smile or your non-smile. This is what people are going to be looking at when they look into my backyard. This is how close it is. So, I ask you, please, in summary, I would like to take a few words from the Arizona Revised Statute 13-2917. This is also paraphrased in City Code, in regards to nuisance. It states anything. It doesn't say dogs barking or...
Thank you.
Loud noise. Okay, thank you.
Darlene Walters. Followed by Randall Hagan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Darlene Walters, and I moved to my home on 41st Avenue, or 41st Street, 5633, about 15 years ago. I bought the home because of the quiet neighborhood and the swimming pool. Due to the homes being built directly behind me, now I have concerns regarding privacy. I will not feel comfortable with two-story homes looking into my backyard. With these new homes, will come increased traffic and possible increased crime. I feel this would be alleviated by building the two-story homes on the east side near Cimarron Village, where there are two existing-story homes now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Randall Hagan.
Good afternoon. My name is Randall Hagan. I first got involved with this thing several months ago. We went down to the South Mountain Village Planning Committee, so to speak. We made our argument there. They found a favor of us, and then all of a sudden, things flipped, and it was against us. The last meeting, we were here about a month ago, and the council at that time says, "Well, we're going to take the recommendation of the council down there at South Mountain." That's nonsense. They already turned against us down there. We had the deciding decision down there. I'm a little curious as to how the government is supposed to be representing the people, and they're not representing them at all. I hope you guys do a better job of representing the people here. There's almost 100 people here that this affects, not the 24 homes we're building. I've asked several times why they can't change it and flip the plan and put the two-story houses over the two-story houses. City says, "Oh, it can't be done. Oh, we can't do this thing without connecting the streets." They don't have to connect the streets so it comes in off of Southern. And they don't have to build the two-story houses looking down onto other people's property. This is nonsense. The Rose Law Group has been hired to represent their client. They're not getting the point across, are not listening to people. They're trying to ask now for this zoning to be changed. It doesn't have to be changed. It can stay just the way it is. They're asking for the change in the zoning, not the people that live there. This is a residential community. It was set up like that, and these people bought it there years ago, never had any idea that a church is going to be selling out to some client for investment purposes, and then it's going to invade their property and their privacy.
I've lived there for twenty-eight years. I know all four neighbors on my street and I recognize every car associated with each house. If the street is opened up, there will be strange cars driving up and down the street all hours of the day and night, which will destroy my sense of security that I've had all these years. The folks at Rose Law Group have stated that the city is the one mandating that Sunland Avenue and Huntington Drive be opened up and cited City Codes thirty-two dash twenty-six and thirty-two dash twenty-seven as the reasons. After review of the codes, it appears that thirty-two dash twenty-six says the department may designate the continuation or discontinuation of such streets. It sure seems that there's some wiggle room here on this one. It also goes on to state that certain proposed streets as designated by the department shall be extended to the tract boundary to provide future connection with adjoining unplanted lands. When our community was formed back in nineteen seventy-nine, almost forty years ago, there was no intention of these streets ever being opened up and we see no reason that they have to be opened up now. We believe there is also some discretion that can be applied here by the city. Thirty-two dash twenty-seven states dead-end streets will not be approved except in locations designated by the department. Well, we are asking that the new community have this designation, which has been allowed in similar nearby communities in our packets on page fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen that we just showed you. At least ten nearby communities, they've allowed that to go on. So it seems, the city seems to have designated at those locations, so why can't a single street with a cul-de-sac be okay here?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm not done.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, we, we hope you'll listen to all of our folks that are here today. We've got a lot of people signed up on that petition and we hope that you'll help us out on this.
Thank you. Mila Mandell. She will be followed by Ann Smith.
Good afternoon. My name is Mila Mandell. I live at forty-one oh-two East Huntington Drive. I am one of the original families in the neighborhood. I am a substitute teacher and one of the classes I substitute for is urban planning. The goal of infilling is to add to the community, not take away from the community. Noel Gardens is asking for a stipulation of only two things, not unreasonable. Number one, do not open Sunland and do not open Huntington Drive. And flip the new houses from west side to east side. We have signatures from a petition, which you have a copy of. Ninety percent of the neighborhood families request the stipulations. Why open Huntington Drive? It's three houses from Southern Avenue. This is unreasonable and unnecessary. The lot is empty right now. There's no utilities, no attached builder, so the houses that they're showing you are just imaginary houses, just an idea. It's a blank slate. Let's add to the community and not take away from a forty-year-old established community.
Thank you. Ann Smith?
She'd have to leave.
Babe?
Can I take her two minutes?
No, Diana Jones. Good try, though.
Good try.
Hi, my name is Diana Jones. I live at fifty-six fifty-one South Forty-first Street. I'm an analytical kind of person. I did a lot of that research and got all of those analytics and the data regarding crime rates and how it's going to affect our neighborhood negatively. But today I want to talk to you more about privacy and the quality of life in our neighborhood. I wanted you first to consider my story. I was the first person to move into our neighborhood when it was built in nineteen seventy-nine. I raised four children, two grandchildren. For almost forty years, I've never had to question my privacy or safety. My house is located exactly in the middle of the street with the backyard next to the lot that they're proposing to build in. I can't prove to you through analytics or data what I'm feeling, so instead I'm going to ask you, please, if you could just take a minute, close your eyes, and imagine just for a second that you're in your own backyard enjoying your family, laughing and carrying on with your children and/or your grandchildren. Your family is together enjoying family time. Then you look up, you see not one but two houses with people looking into your backyard. How does it make you feel? Anxious, uncomfortable, threatened, vulnerable, like you can't spend time in your own backyard the way you used to? Now imagine you're one of my neighbors with a pool in their backyard. Maybe your wife or your daughter or your granddaughter wants to lay around the pool relaxing without a worry in the world. Now, if you had your eyes closed, if you could look up at me right now and imagine that I'm standing just a story above you, the distance that I'm at from you right now or probably from you, from Felicita maybe, is about the same distance that these houses will be to my backyard. You can see the emotions on my face, I can see the emotions on your face, I can see your eyes, I can see your smile or your non-smile. This is what people are going to be looking at when they look into my backyard. This is how close it is. So I ask you, please, in summary, I would like to take a few words from the Arizona Revised Statute thirteen dash two-nine-one-seven. This is also paraphrased in City Code in regards to nuisance. It states anything. It doesn't say dogs barking or-
Thank you.
-loud noise. Okay, thank you.
Darlene Walters. Followed by Randall Hagan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Darlene Walters and I moved to my home on Forty-first Avenue, or Forty-first Street, fifty-six thirty-three, about fifteen years ago. I bought the home because of the quiet neighborhood and the swimming pool. Due to the homes being built directly behind me, now I have concerns regarding privacy. I will not feel comfortable with two-story homes looking into my backyard. With these new homes will come increased traffic and possible increased crime. I feel this would be alleviated by building the two-story homes on the east side near Semeron Village where there are two existing story homes now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Randall Hagan.
Good afternoon. My name's Randall Hagan. I first got involved in this thing several months ago. We went down to the South Mountain Village Planning Committee, so to speak. We made our argument there. They found a favor of us and then all of a sudden, things flipped and it was against us. The last meeting, we were here about a month ago and the council at that time says, well, we're going to take the recommendation of the council down there at South Mountain. That's nonsense. They already turned against us down there. We had the deciding decision down there. I'm a little curious as to how the government is supposed to be representing the people and they're not representing them at all. I hope you guys do a better job of representing the people here. There's almost a hundred people here that this affects, not the twenty-four homes we're building. I've asked several times why they can't change it and flip the plan and put the two-story houses over the two-story houses. City says, oh, it can't be done. Oh, we can't do this thing without connecting the streets. They don't have to connect the streets so it comes in off of Southern. And they don't have to build the two-story houses looking down onto other people's property. This is nonsense. The Rose Law Group has been hired to represent their client. They're not getting the point across, they're not listening to people. They're trying to ask now for this zoning to be changed. It doesn't have to be changed, it can stay just the way it is. They're asking for the change in the zoning, not the people that live there. This is a residential community, it was set up like that, and these people bought it there years ago, never had any idea that a church is going to be selling out to some client for investment purposes. And then it's going to invade their property and their privacy and their quiet way of life around there. Please consider these facts that put forth on those pamphlets. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to know if there was an opportunity for the neighborhood, for the residents to meet with the developer before?
Hearing, no other questions, I will close the meeting. Oh, did you put a card in or? Okay, I don't have it, but here, I take it through the applicant.
Mayor Williams, members of the council. I am Thomas Galvin with Rose Law Group on behalf of the applicant. For the record, I did submit a speaker card, so I don't know if it got lost in translation or transportation. However, we do have a presentation that we want to deliver for you, but we'll be brief because I really want to get to the heart of the matter, which are the objections raised by the neighbors. I do want to say at the onset, I want to make two points. One, this is a very exciting infill project for a challenged site. It's a very narrow site that can only fit twenty-four lots here, it's been vacant for years. Number two is that we have worked in direct consultation with the neighbors for the past several months, sometimes on a daily basis between the two village planning committee meetings and through the planning commission meeting. A lot of the issues that you heard today were issues actually frankly between the neighbors and with city staff. We were caught in the middle. We are very happy to meet and agree to the stipulations proposed by the neighbors. Sometimes they are impractical as instructed by staff. As you can see here, this project has no proposed change from the general plan and in fact, the general plan defines this project. It promotes infill projects for connectivity and density, no change there. As you can see here, the zoning, it's surrounded, R-one-eight to the west and R-two to the east. And in fact, the current zoning, S-one, you can build a two-story home and you can build it with a thirty-foot setback, exactly what you would have with the zoning change. This is the site, these are the pictures that were taken in June. In consideration of the concerns and worries about crime, I'm going to show you a little bit later, the conceptual plans for what the homes might look like and take into consideration the crime argument when you compare it to the pictures you see here of this site as it exists today. This is the proposed site plan that we proposed to the city. In fact, we had proposed it with the two streets, Sunland and Huntington, closed. It was the city who instructed us that you cannot close the streets because of the reasons under the general plan and the ordinance. I want to read to you, well, I want to show you that there were four proposed stipulations from the neighbors that we agreed to. One of them was do not open the two streets. We had agreed to that. Number two, sorry, I can't read that far. Build houses on the east side of the lot and not on the west side of the lot. We tried to do that, it was impractical. We were told because of retention and drainage issues, it is impossible. Number three, no two-story houses on the north side of the lot. We agreed to that and that is in the current plan you see today. And number four, install mature evergreen trees along the west side of the lot. We have agreed to that. So three of those four, I think we can say are able to be done. It really comes down to the closed streets. So if you look at that first request, do not open the two streets, it was planning and traffic staff who did not support that. Number two, build houses on the east side, not on the west side, as I said, staff did not support that. So what you have here is now the proposed community. As you see here, the green dots represent the mature evergreen landscaping that neighbors requested and which we agreed to. The three red stars along the far side are the north side of the lot, limited to one story, we agreed to that as well. This was approved by the planning commission, it was approved by the village planning committee after two meetings. It complies with the general plan, it's compatible and transitional with the surrounding areas of density and land use. It creates quality twenty-four, single-family detached community lots and it's now developing a small infill property that's been challenged for years. I'm going to get through to our newest slides in light of the arguments that we've been hearing lately. And these are the conceptual elevations. Obviously, this is not a promise or a guarantee that these are the homes are going to look like, but this is what could be there and to replace that vacant lot of the photos of which you saw a couple of minutes ago. We have a letter of support from a neighbor who lives directly to the north. And let's go to the issue of the connectivity of streets. Okay. This really comes down to what staff had told us. You must connect these streets. This is in conformance with the general plan, you cannot close these streets. These are not streets that were designed to be closed, they're in what are known as stubbed streets. So the city says you cannot have stubbed streets, they must be open.
Please wrap up.
Okay, I'm finished and I'm happy for any questions or any rebuttal time. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? If I don't have any questions, I'll close the public meeting and now, woman?
I was present at the South Mountain Village back in July and I heard this, this item, I heard the feedback from the village planning committee, I heard the neighbors. In this new role, again, I've heard the neighbors' your concerns. I met with the zoning attorneys with our staff to address those concerns. And Alan, I'd like to ask a few questions just to clarify some of the concerns that the neighbors have brought up. One of them is to move the development to the east side of the lot. Can you go over the layout and explain why the planning in the homes on the east side of the property would not be feasible and not the safest option because of the drainage concerns?
Certainly, Mayor, Councilwoman Mendoza, while the aerial, the site plan comes up here, I would say that the, the reason the applicant has laid out the project as it is today is the, the site is draining to the north in that area and so the drainage to continue that site without having to build up the pads a lot and change your grade is on that other side. And so that's why they, partly why they've chosen that side. In addition, there is a right-of-way and public utility easement that runs down this western, I'm sorry, this eastern edge of the property here. And so that's why they chose to overlap some of that right-of-way with their proposed street and allow their drainage to flow so that it flows down this way into that retention basin that you see down here. This is what collects it and there's already some existing right-of-way because of that APS power line corridor here that goes into to make it more feasible to do this. And because this is the lower side of the property, this is where your drainage is. If they were to flip-flop it on this side, you would be having to lower this side of the property and raise this side of the property to make the drainage work. And it wouldn't be very feasible to make that happen.
That is not correct. That is not true. Drainage is from the east side or west side.
Please do not interrupt, he has the floor.
So it is infeasible to do, it's something that could be done, but it's not feasible and not what the applicant is proposing relative to making this subdivision work. If I can take a moment to address the, the access point issue here, the subdivision code is what requires access through existing subdivisions. And so this clearly was designed as a stub-out street, which is what happens in a lot of cases where you want those connections because you want a neighborhood to have connectivity as expressed by the, the general plan, the people who voted to approve that. You want to have a neighborhood where kids can walk back and forth ultimately when people are living there in the future. And so that's why staff has been saying you need to make those two connections here and here.
Those are incorrect facts. I'm sorry, but I've been studying those for a long time. You give me two minutes of that thing there and I'll tell you why.
No, I'm sorry.
Did you say it was infeasible or feasible?
Well, from an engineering standpoint, there's lots of things that are feasible, there's a cost associated with that. And when you have a particular site that only has small number of lots, it becomes infeasible to make that happen according to information provided by the applicant.
No, he's wrong.
Oh, okay.
No, he's wrong. He's absolutely-
I'm hearing two different messages. So I needed to get, I need clarity. I'm hearing it is feasible, however, it's due to the cost that it could be infeasible because of, of, I guess, it doesn't pencil out. I'm going to use my term that I've learned. So I need clarity on that because I want to know if it's feasible or if it's infeasible to do what the question was.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, from an engineering standpoint, most, not all, but most things are feasible, there's a cost associated with making that happen. In this case, the applicant has indicated with the number of lots, doing that makes the project infeasible because of the cost. And I'm sure the applicant can provide some more information relative to that if you'd like.
Councilwoman Mendoza, did you have some more?
Yes. The neighbors also expressed concerns about having two-story houses in the development. My understanding is that the developers have made concessions with their landscaping designs. Can you explain the develop, can you explain how the developers have addressed this privacy concern?
Mayor and Councilwoman Mendoza, the applicant has proposed some single-story lots on the north end of the property up in this particular area up here. In addition, they're proposing additional trees in these areas to provide some screening. The, any trees and landscaping in the backyard of those future homes is not something that the city controls at this time. It would be up to individual buyers to plant trees in the backyard at that point.
We have also heard concerns about increase of traffic. Can you address those concerns?
So, yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Mendoza, your typical single-family residential home generates about nine trips per twenty-four-hour period. Taken with the overall number of trips that you have here in terms of the number of units, you're looking at about two-hundred-and-sixteen trips in a twenty-four-hour period. And that would be based upon I T E, traffic institution standards across the country. With that, it won't provide a significant amount of increased traffic relative to what you see in other neighborhoods across the city where you have the majority of neighborhoods connect in smaller, older subdivisions like this, that connection happens and that's just as part of what people see when, rather than going down to Southern to take their kid to play at someone's friend's house next door, they're able to drive through a local neighborhood street, that's what's supposed to happen for that connectivity.
One more, two more questions, actually. There are concerns about access to the neighborhood. So knowing that we need at least two access points because of ingress, egress, and safety concerns, can you address the access issue and how could this be resolved without compromising the safety of the residents?
Mayor, Councilwoman Mendoza, if the, the council directs staff to, we could as part of the subdivision appeal process, look to close off access to the Huntington Street, which is this lower one here, the more important one being access up here so that emergency vehicles and traffic in the event that there's something blocking this has other ways to get in and out of the subdivision. If the council desires, then I can direct the subdivision committee to look at allowing that one to be closed in the future so that there would just be one access point into the neighborhood.
You also heard about some neighbors regarding other subdivisions who only have one ax, one point of access. Can you, can you explain that? I know you've done some research.
Sure, let me, let me pull up some slides. Some of the, the areas that, that were provided by the neighbors of having a similar situation, staff went through and looked at that earlier this afternoon. And so you see the, the subject site is just off to the east over here on Southern Avenue. And so the sites that they had picked and talked about here, you see a few of them where they talked about having the same condition in terms of one access. In this point, there's one access point that is ingress and egress and there's an exit that comes over here. This particular parcel is surrounded on two sides by industrial zoning and so we don't connect industrial truck traffic zoning to residential. But this parcel does have two points of, of access here and an egress going out to Southern with this other one being access to Southern Avenue. The next one that was brought up is this one, this is directly to the east of that. This is a parcel that was, a parcel area that was platted in nineteen thirty-nine. It was not a subdivision like over here. This was something that was platted in the county in thirty-nine, the city did not annex down in the South Mountain area until the late fifties. And so it has one access point here that goes up Southern and a cul-de-sac. However, these are very large lots, in particular in this area here, as you can tell by the aerial. Those are kind of more ranch type of development that is similar to what you see on the south side of Southern within the mixed-use agricultural area. This particular subdivision here does have two access points to Southern Avenue, one here, one over here. This particular parcel is an older development as well. Here you'll see it was subdivided in nineteen fifty-eight. And in fact, you have a stubbed-out street to make connections here, just the same as you do in the subject, you know, parcel with those neighbors to make that connection happen going right through here. So that as those parcels develop in the future, the city would look to make those connections happen as those areas develop. This is another example, we have access on Southern, you also have an access point over here off to Thirty-Sixth Place. And with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Anyone else on the council? Councilwoman?
Quickly as a follow-up, so we could close the street, it would just require a subdivision waiver. And I, I understand the need for a secondary access, but I, I know for a fact, I can think of an area off of Shea where they have put up a type of crash gate or emergency gate. It's only opened when there is an emergency and it's for police and fire. So we could do something like that. I think that's why you were asking the questions perhaps about it.
Is there a possibility to have an emergency gate on Sunland?
Mayor, council members, yes. I think that would still take a subdivision appeal to, to do that, you know, in order to make that access happen, not to have any access point on, on Southern. Because of this small parcel and the number of units, it's not something that staff would recommend, but if that's what council directs, then that's what staff will-
And can I just follow up? So if we make that recommendation, that would be helpful through the subdivision appeal. And perhaps we could do that then for emergency. I understand the emergency issue. If, if there is a horrible accident on Southern and they can't get to a house that may have a nine-one-one call, you still have to have another access, but perhaps we can gate it somehow so that it is only used in emergencies and maybe make that the northern, is that Sunland?
Sunland.
Sunland. Because I, I think you were kind of hinting that you wanted to see the other one closed anyway.
Yes, that is correct.
Do we have a motion?
I move the, go ahead Felicity, you move the motion.
Oh, we have one more question. Sorry.
Vice Mayor? So we could stipulate that the streets are closed, but we could get overruled by this committee?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, the item before you is a zoning ordinance change, which is chapter forty-one of the City Code. Chapter thirty-six is what deals with the subdivision code and that has a separate setup appeal process, everything that goes with that. So technically, that committee could make their own decision of that. They, the, the principles involved in that committee are, all work for me and I will make them aware of the direction of council as it relates to this particular item. And that's how we ultimately implement it.
So it's not unlike, Madam Chair, like the Parks Board. They don't necessarily have to listen to our recommendations, which is kind of awkward. You're saying that they kind of will, but you know, we're voting right now. And I, I take the neighbor's point, you know, it's been one way since nineteen seventy-nine.
I think that the difference as it relates to, to the Park Board, Vice Mayor, is that the Parks Board is, is appointed by the mayor and council to, you know, to carry out their duties and there's a separate, you know, thing relative to the charter that, that lays out what they have to do, where the City Code lays out, under my direction as the director, this is how things operate. And so that provides that additional oversight to that subdivision committee, which all work for me to make those decisions and I will talk to them about it. work for me to make those decisions, and I will talk to them about it.
Okay. I mean, that's a nuanced thing, but, you know, they don't necessarily have to, I mean, you're going to suggest...
I highly recommend.
But, I mean, it also puts us in an awkward spot because this isn't the developers' doing. It's not their fault. We have a similar situation you and I have discussed in a potential case coming up in my own district, and I had strongly held views. The neighbors want one thing. They're good with the project more or less otherwise. You know, it's, I guess I understand this interesting bifurcation, but it is, you know, we have to do something today under the supposition that something else is going to happen down the road. And that's a little bit worrisome because we're counting on other people. But it's not your fault, so I understand. But it's also not the developers' fault. And so I understand their point, which I think they highlighted accurately. So this isn't their idea. They probably love to not do the street, right? I assume it would cost them less money.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I don't think they care one way or the other on the street because they have some other improvements they would have to do if they didn't do the streets.
In lieu of, all right, so it's a wash for them.
And so I think for them, they're okay doing either way. That's why they agreed with the neighbors, but it's staff saying that the subdivision code won't allow that to happen. I think there are lots of things that the council conditions their approval on that is direction to staff to go forth and do subject to these requirements. This is really no different than that. It's a little bit more complicated, but I would liken it to at times when you've had cases where somebody wanted an over-height wall for additional privacy. The council can't grant variances because that's not in your purview. That goes through the zoning adjustment process. But the council can stipulate that an applicant go file for that particular item, and what we do as part of that hearing process is explain to the hearing officer that this was part of what was decided as this case went forward and instruct them accordingly. And we've been very successful in that.
All right. Thank you.
I have one last question before the motion. What I had heard from the developer, and they can say yea or nay, I had heard that they were willing to have those access points closed, but that staff, I guess, stipulated or insisted on having those entryways or access points. So what I am hearing also is that we have the ability, council has the ability, direct staff to move forward on our direction and that it will go back to a, is it a committee or a council or, I don't know?
It's a subdivision committee of supervisors who work in different disciplines within the planning and development department. And so as the managers, they will make that decision, and I will talk to all of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I have one more question.
Okay.
So the question is, so who approves the codes or the ordinances?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, ultimately, the mayor and council approve all the various city codes and ordinance.
So are we allowed to modify our decision if we all agree, if there's a majority of us? Or, I'm not sure, I'm asking legal advice on that. As long as it's not dangerous or puts a community in a dangerous way or something like that?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, I mean, if the council wants to look at that exact language to have a discussion about that, I can certainly, you know, bring forward that to talk to each of you about and get some general direction of where you'd like to go. You know, we could talk about it more specifics if that's what you'd like us to do.
I think that when we pass codes and stuff that our city is 500 square miles and there's different needs and different wants for different communities, and I think we have codes there that we try to have a blanket type of code, but I think we are able to modify or we should be able to modify different areas. I represent Levine that has a lot of horse properties, and some of the codes might not ask for that. I know that there is some codes in Levine that ask for trails and all that for horses, but in the future, there might not be a need for it, and there might be some modification in that aspect of it. Not saying that we're getting rid of horse trails, but I'm just saying 20 years, 30 years from now, if we don't modify them. So I'm just wondering in the future, I'm looking at even the light rail down Central Avenue. We have some cul-de-sacs there that have no access except for Central Avenue, and there might be some safety issues that we have to modify what we have right now to make sure that there's exits or even condemn some property to make sure that there's exits to make sure that those communities can have access to emergency vehicles if something happens on Central. So I think there's different needs for different communities, so I believe in the codes, but I think that there should be an opportunity for us to modify them. Just a statement.
Just for the record, I happen to agree very much with you. This is the first time I've ever heard of that, and I just feel like the council has the responsibility basically to have the last word. I'm very concerned that you have an internal committee that can overturn what the decision is made here or make major modifications. I really am concerned, so I'd like to see you bring that forward. And if you have any others that are similar, please let us know and let's talk about those. Anyway, I want to go for the motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Huntington Drive to be constructed as a cul-de-sac with a turnaround rather than a through-street, and also to add an emergency gate on Sunland. Also, the developer shall pursue a technical appeal to the subdivision ordinance to request that Huntington Drive not be connected to the existing portion of the street to the west of the subject property prior to preliminary site plan approval and is approved by the planning and development department.
Second.
Mayor.
Councilman.
I have a question for the developer, if that's all right with them or if it's feasible for them to do that.
Mayor Williams, members of the council, there are some issues that we have here, but I really want to go to the heart of the matter of the language. I heard the words cul-de-sac. Can't do a cul-de-sac there. That would be a bad impact on the project and the site plan itself. What we don't have are assurances of, from Mr. Stevenson about the language because we're going to have to file technical appeals. We're going to have to file, we're going to have to pay fees. We're going to have to file various technical appeals. There are ordinance 3227, another ordinance prohibiting dead-end streets. There's a variety of ordinances here that we would be violating if this amendment would be passed. And now putting in a cul-de-sac would just upend the entire site plan. That we were told at the beginning, when we got the site plan comments, you can't have a closed street. So the cul-de-sac portion is what is most distressing for us at this point.
Your own lawyers told anybody in security that that was going to be okay.
Please, sir, sir, please. Let's wait and see if they're having a little conversation. Alan?
Continue.
Can you respond to that?
I think they...
Is that accurate?
Mayor, members of council, so what would happen in a, if you take away the zoning application before, if this was already zoned and it was coming in, they would file a technical appeal to not provide that access if that's what they were wanting to do. What staff would look at at that point is what can we do relative to providing cul-de-sac or turnaround so that it's clear to the people who are in the existing subdivision that you shouldn't drive down there and expect to get through? In this particular instance, as you can see, neither of the streets are significantly far that the public would be led askew if they did not, you know, because you can see that there is a dead end right there. So what we can do as part of the technical appeal is work to minimize any requirements for a cul-de-sac turnaround on Huntington and put signage up there so that people can be clear that as they're in that neighborhood, that it's not a through-street, don't turn down Huntington, and they'd be able to see the emergency gate only access on Sunland.
All right. I'm pretty sure I have at least one of those in my district, so...
I think you're confusing Huntington and Sunland.
So, please.
Sunland is the street to the north. Huntington is the little tiny one to the south. We don't, you wouldn't put a cul-de-sac at Huntington. You would put the cul-de-sac at Sunland.
The current stipulation, just so I can clarify, would be that Huntington not go through, that Sunland would go through with emergency access up here. Is that correct, Councilwoman Mendoza?
That's correct.
So it would just be emergency access for this portion. This would be closed off.
Closed.
Okay. Then we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Givara. Mendoza.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes. Eight zero. Thank you. I don't think we have any further business. Adjourned.